Oh.
Yeah, it killed.
I also like these sheets.
What color is your blood?
It's too red.
It is so red, I just don't care.
I know because you've seen it before.
I just tell them.
Okay.
So you only needed all this.
All right.
You don't just have no idea.
You have to ask.
Yes.
How popular you have everyone she can come to.
Speed on you know what I did.
She has.
There's a lot of people like you have.
I was.
You want to sign.
You know what I did.
And then rest of your work. So yeah, we're. And you know, we have here and there. Really open.
It's all good.
It's all good.
Yeah.
Snakes.
No.
But I mean.
Yeah. You're still in there. He's.
This is important.
I'm sorry. I really am.
Yeah.
It's okay. Okay, I'm on. I think for my.
You know, there's a good. I didn't.
Right. So very well. I don't. Who is that? Really? I'm not. I'm not. Right.
All right, we'd like to welcome everyone and call to order the study meeting of the West Valley City Council. It is November twelfth, twenty twenty four. We're beginning our meeting at four thirty two P M. In the multipurpose room of West Valley City Hall. All members of the council are present. We have Councilman. Norfelt, Councilman Hughes, Councilman Fitziamanu, Councilman Whitstone, Councilman Herman, Councilman Christensen, myself. We're also joined by our city manager, Mr. Peely, and our city recorder, Ms. Kimmich. We will go to our minutes of October twenty second, twenty twenty four. Turn those to the council for discussion or emotion.
We move to approve the minutes.
Certainly.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And both stand approved. Thank you. We have review of our regular meeting this evening, and we'll ask Mr. Pastrick to come up. There's been some updates to one of the items.
Thank you, Mayor Steve Pastrick, Community Development Department. So on G P Z five, twenty twenty four. There are a couple of changes to the development agreement. So the, at our last meeting, the council expressed concern about the width of the lots along six thousand west. And so in this latest development agreement, this is in exhibit B. Latest proposal reduced the total number of lots from forty one to thirty nine. So there's two fewer fewer lots overall. And then there's also a line that says that lots running six thousand west would be limited to twelve lots total. So the prior concept had sixteen lots on six thousand. Now that's reduced by four. And then the, so two, two of those were just the fact that they removed two lots. And then the other two were picked up from reducing the amount of open space. So that's, those are basically the three changes. So the deduction by two lots total, limiting the number of lots along six thousand west to twelve lots, and then just reducing the amount of open space in order to relocate those two lots.
Any questions for Mr. Pastrick?
The average square footage is those lots now.
Well, just the ones on six, six thousand or just overall?
Overall.
I, I don't, but if you could, I could work on getting a number. I just don't know that off the top of my head.
I think that's my biggest concern is we, the neighbors think they're gonna get six thousand square foot lots or, which that what we noticed?
The, so the, the.
Or eight thousand.
The R, it's the R one eight zone, and we did mention the P U D designation that.
They don't know what that means though. They're not gonna get eight thousand square foot lots. So it'd be nice to know what, what they're gonna get.
I'm still trying to figure out the map. That was in our packet. I can see where the lots are. Where does the green space fit?
Sure, let me. I'll, I can share my screen and maybe highlight that. So again, this is the, the concept I'm, I'm showing here on the screen is before the, the changes that we, we were discussing. So in the prior concept, we had some open area here on the, the north cul-de-sac as well as the south cul-de-sac. And so that, that will still be the case under the new concept. It's just that in the south area, there'll be a couple of lots. So this area will be smaller because we're shifting a couple of lots on six thousand west down to this corner here.
That's where I thought six thousand west was, but I just couldn't figure out that other racetrack over next, over the right.
Those are just the inset.
Yeah, sorry. Yeah, these are, these are just kind of blown up drawings of those, of both of the cul-de-sacs.
Okay. If, you know, if they're gonna put a racetrack, and I wanna be there.
First to sign up.
Those are gonna be significantly reduced because we're losing some lots.
The one, the one to the south would be.
So how many lots, uh, with a new plan?
Thirty nine.
And how many, uh, own occupy, how many rented out?
So what, what's in the development agreement right now is a provision that where the, the H O A would limit the number of rentals to thirty percent of the total, up to thirty percent.
To thirty percent rented out.
Correct. So again, it's, it's not, it's not saying thirty percent would be, but thirty percent could be.
Could be.
Right.
Does the H O A include the ones on six thousand or just on that?
Yes, it'd be also the all thirty nine.
I don't see any more questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, um, we have a proclamation that we've done for quite a few years for Small Business Saturday on November thirtieth of twenty twenty four. Is there anyone that would like to read this on November, November twenty sixth in the regular meeting? Will, we'll do that. All right. Now we return to the Steve Pastrick Show. We'll ask him to come up and explain G P Z seven, twenty twenty four. And he has the next three, I believe.
Sorry, I sat down too soon. All right, so let's. All right, so the, this, the next item is a request to amend the general plan and zoning. And the property, uh, there's two parcels. It's a fifty eight ninety two and fifty nine ninety eight West Parkway Boulevard, so about thirty seven and a half acres. The general plan right now, it calls for a medium density residential, kind of on this east portion of the property closest to Mountain and then large lot residential on the western portion. They requested changes to light manufacturing. Uh, the zoning, you have both A and A zone, so basically agricultural zoning currently, and the request is the M zone, or the manufacturing zone. Here's just a close up. And again, just for, for context, you have Mountain View Corridor here. Parkway Boulevard, this is the Stegner Academy Charter School to the south. And then you have new industrial development here to the north. So this, this building is now completed, and then there'll be another building basically just like this one on this parcel to the, to the north. So this just shows zoning. So again, the green would be the agricultural zone and the, the gray to the north is the, the manufacturing zone. Now, uh, I put this in just for context. So we actually had uh, the same requests over a year ago to rezone the property manufacturing. And at the time, uh, the applicant was Ivory Homes, and they, they had put together this kind of rough concept to show how this property could develop. At the time, this was a little bit, it might be a little more speculative in that they didn't have a industrial developer in, in tow, so to speak. It was more just conception showing how this could develop. Um, just a couple of things I'll point out before I show the, the latest concept. You'll notice that the, this is the, the canal here. So they were basically keeping the canal uh, where it is, and then also showing just a cul-de-sac here at the end of, this is Stegner Way here, just west of the school. This is the latest concept plan. And so now the, the applicant Van Trust Real Estate is, is looking to acquire this property from Ivory Homes, who's the current landowner. And in this concept, they would be relocating the canal. So basically, it roughly parallels Beasley Road, which is this, or Beasley Lane, which is this road to the north. So that's, uh, that's a, a change. Then also in working with Public Works, instead of having uh, this road terminate in a cul-de-sac, it now has kind of a knuckle here and then a road extending along the north side of Stegner Academy. And really, one of the main reasons for that is that we do have plans to eventually have, what's labeled here is fifty nine hundred west connect down to Parkway Boulevard and align with the ramp for Mountain View Corridor. And so by doing that, that will particularly help with the, the traffic for the school. Right now, it's just on a dead end, and it gets pretty messy over there. So there, in, in the development agreement for this proposal, the developer would actually be building uh, this road up to the east property line. And then this, of course, the, the extension of fifty nine hundred west would be the city at some future, future point. So I wanted to make those distinctions again between this is what was proposed last year for a concept, and then again, this is the latest. With the biggest changes being the relocation of the canal, the extension of Stegner Way here along the, the southeast side of the property. And then, of course, because the, the canal is relocated, it allows you to have a, what I consider to be a better layout for the industrial buildings. Just a little bit of background information. So we have the, um, the northwest, um, E D A that covers this part of the city. Um, that, that just basically provides the opportunity for a potential incentive, uh, not that the city, uh, would necessarily offer an incentive. It's just an, an area that exists within this northwest part of the city. This is the concept plan of the, or the actual site plan of the property directly north. As I mentioned, what's labeled as building one has already been built. And then building two will be built, uh, again, just directly north. This just shows, uh, the eventual, uh, approximate location of where we'd like to see fifty nine hundred west extend and connect down at Parkway Boulevard and align with the, so this would be the ramp location for Mountain View Corridor. Uh, we also mentioned, you'll see this in the meeting minutes, the city actually is currently, uh, widening this stretch of Parkway Boulevard. So that work is actually underway right now. And I understand will be completed next year. And we got a series of pictures. I, um, I won't spend a lot of time on these, but this is looking from Parkway, uh, north along the power lines. So the property, uh, of course, west of the power lines or left of that. Stegner Academy. This is looking, uh, south from Stegner Way. So again, the school is on the left. North on Stegner Way. Uh, this is where Stegner Way dead ends at the north end of the school. So again, this is where the road would be. Uh, you'd have the, the elbow and then, or the knuckle, and then this road would turn, turn to the right or east. Looking south along Stegner. Now, this is moving towards Beasley. So this is the, the road that would be along the north side of the property. And this is looking east. Looking south from Beasley towards the canal. Uh, west along Beasley. Uh, east along Beasley, just further east along the property. You can see Mountain View Corridor out in the distance. This was, um, fifty nine hundred west. So again, the idea would be this is looking south. This road would eventually extend south down to Parkway. You can see Stegner Academy off in the distance to the right. Uh, looking north on fifty nine hundred. So this is the road that continues up and goes over to fifty six hundred west. And then west along fifty nine hundred west, and I believe that's the last image. So in addition to your request and change of the zoning, I just want to point out, there is a development agreement here that includes a number of provisions, and I'll just, uh, hit on those briefly. Maybe go back to the concept plan for reference. So the first provision is that the developer would, uh, design and build this road here, which is listed as the possible right of way. In the development agreement, it actually is called out that that would, it's no longer possible. They would actually build that. The second is that the developer would not allow truck traffic to travel south along Stegner Way. So this would be open for, say, employees to use, but not truck traffic. So that, that's the second point. The third is along the Beasley, uh, Beasley Lane currently. West of this property, we have, the city has a five foot park strip and a five, or excuse me, five foot park strip and a ten foot uh, sidewalk is meant to be a trail. And so item number three would be that uh, the developer would install that within the existing right of way along Beasley, basically from the east to west ends of the property. Uh, number four, and this one's a little bit tricky to point out, but the city, uh, you'll, you'll see here that the property along the east end actually abuts Beasley Lane, but as you move west, there's actually a little strip of property that separates this partial from the road. One of those is privately held. But the other one that begins about right here is actually owned by the city. And it's, it's basically where the canal is. And in talking with Public Works, the city doesn't really need to own that. And so item number four is that, assuming that the uh, the city and the developer can come to agreeable terms, this, the developer would purchase that strip of ground between their property and Beasley Lane. But at a minimum, we would grant and, uh, basically an easement so that they can have access over that strip of ground to Beasley. So that's item number four. And then last, item number five has to do with the canal relocation. So you'll, you'll see here, this blue line represents the approximate where the canal relocation would take place. And that eventually, when the city builds fifty nine hundred west, there's gonna need to be a box culvert put in. And so what the, the developer has agreed to is to essentially design and build that box culvert that the city would then reimburse, because again, it's not actually on their property. But it's, it's less, it's much less expensive than it is now uh, before the road is built, while the canal is being relocated, than to, than to do that after the fact. So it's saving, it would save the city money to do that now as opposed to later. And that's, uh, that summarizes the items in the development agreement.
Okay. Any questions from the council? Yes.
Can you show us where the crosstown trail? Either through or near this property?
So that, that ten foot, um, trail that I mentioned that would be installed would, that, that's it. So, so as you uh, going out to seventy two hundred west, we have a ten foot walk that extends along the south side of Beasley Lane, but it, it doesn't exist through here. And so that would, that would be extending that trail across the, the frontage of this property.
So there's a trail that goes along Mountain View Corridor.
Correct.
And, and, uh, it, it comes, you know, it's, it's right up, it's high there and, and goes on a bridge over, over the canal. But it also comes down from there, and you can go under Mountain View Corridor along the canal, right to this property. Will there be a trail that connects?
So I know in talking with Public Works, we've talked about that, that I think, and Dan, hopefully you can correct me if I'm misspeaking here, it would be that when we do the fifty nine hundred west road, that we would figure out a connection at that point? Is that, or am I misspeaking there?
You can scroll to the below, one or two pages below this, but the, the trail will follow Beasley Road to the T intersection where it will intersect the fifty nine hundred west, and then there will be a, an aggregate crossing. So the trail will be on the south side of Beasley. It'll cross fifty nine hundred west, and then it'll go parallel to fifty nine hundred west, cross the canal, and then the trails will be on the south side of the canal, and it'll connect to the Mountain View Corridor.
So, so basically like, like this down and then connect here?
Yes.
Thank you.
So approximately timeframe on the fifty nine hundred. Build up.
At, at this point, I don't know. We have funding identified, so I, I don't think we have a timeline yet for that.
Um, any feedback from any of the neighbors on the numbers?
We have not received, uh, I recall for at planning commission stage, any, any, uh, concerns for neighboring property owners.
So correct me, um, to the west, the property line lines up with Magna Waters' property line as well?
It, so I can maybe get to another image and show that. So Magda owns this property directly to the south here, and then also this property that's, that goes all the way down to Parkway Boulevard. The property west is actually privately owned, so it's not, this, uh, what's directly west is not owned by Magna.
So your cursor is so small, I can't.
Oh, sorry.
That's okay.
So it's.
I'm gonna get my glasses.
It, so it's, the, the property west is privately owned. It's only the property south of this and west of Stegner Academy that is owned by.
It binds up with the end of.
Right, yeah.
Property, correct?
So Mag, Magnus property, their west boundary is the same as the west boundary of this property.
So south of this property is the school of Magna Water.
Correct.
And is that one house in between?
There is one, one home that is directly west of Stegner Way.
Uh huh.
So you have the, the school, the road, uh, private residence, and then you have Magna Water.
Magna Water, okay. And then I think my other question, and to the west, is that our stormwater or is, I mean, our, yeah, stormwater area, or that's still privately owned? And then it's the parks?
So, so the, um, it's privately owned directly west of this property.
Okay.
Most of the stormwater park is west of sixty four hundred west. We do own a little, you can see where this kind of wetland area is. We own some property right here, but most of that is, is gonna be on the west side of sixty four hundred.
Okay.
So did we deny the request a year ago?
The council did, yes. So prior, it was in June of last year, so it's been over a year, so they can make, uh, make, make a new application. But in addition, there have been, been a number of changes for, over the prior proposal.
And one of the biggest concerns from the residents that I remember is the access of the warehouse area to the school area. Um, not having the, having any, they didn't want any access, right? Or was that?
I, I know that, that was a concern we had as, as staff at the time. But in talking with Public Works, the, the, the bigger concern they had is that during pickup and drop off, just the amount of stacking that occurs and having this new road and this potential connection to fifty nine hundred essentially creates a loop to where you can hopefully avoid the stacking on Parkway and, and from getting a head nod from Dan, so.
So they'll finish that road now, but there won't be an access to the east to it until we finish fifty nine.
Right.
And then they could go north and go over that bridge to fifty sixth.
Correct. So they, they could go, or go down to Parkway and kind of create the loop. But even, even in the short term, it, it even just provides more stacking and parking area just for people to get off Parkway.
Well, and I drove down there just on an errand the other day, and there were parents under the viaduct waiting for their kids to come out and walk down to them. So it is a big issue, the parking and getting in and out of there.
Especially construction.
Mm hmm. Yeah, that construction is kind of overwhelming. Hey, any more questions for Steve on this one?
Is there a compelling reason why we should go away from the general plan of, of having residential there?
So, so some of the re, potential reasons, um, that we mentioned, again, it's ultimately that, that's kind of the million dollar question would be, um, you do have, uh, so that there, aside from this one residence, you, you're sort of insulated. There's not any residential. You're u- up against Mountain View Corridor and what will eventually be a road that will, that's mainly serving industrial traffic, right? So that fifty nine hundred west is intended to allow folks that, to get to Mountain View Corridor sort of directly. And so you have Beasley, which is clearly mostly industrial, and this road that's industrial and Mountain View. Uh, you're somewhat insulated here with the school and, uh, and the, uh, Magna Water property that will likely remain open indefinitely because they have several well sites on that property. So from that standpoint, it, it's pretty well insulated. And, and then again, you do have, uh, industrial use right, right across the street, um, from this. Um, so those are maybe just some thoughts on that.
The access to Mountain View there is only to the south or from the south, right?
Correct, yeah. So if you're, if you're northbound on Mountain View, you can get off here, or if you want to go southbound, you can get on, but there are no ramps on the north side of Parkway.
Are there planned ramps?
No, and, and the reason is because of the, the, the proximity to two oh one, there wasn't enough room to, to add ramps there.
So you think most trucks will end up on Beasley down to seventy two?
So with, what, what Beasley accomplishes is you can get to, um, you can get to seventy two hundred west, you can get to fifty six hundred west. Um, our, I think our hope, and again, I'm, I'm, I know I'm, I'm phoning a friend here with Dan if he has corrections, but um, we, we prefer to not have truck traffic on sixty four hundred west. So by putting in fifty nine hundred west, i- if someone's wanting to get to Mountain View Corridor, that provides a, a direct shot. Um, or if they're wanting to get to fifty six, you're likely just gonna go over here, um, that direction. So we're, we're really trying to have Beasley be sort of the dividing line between industrial traffic and, and more residential traffic was, was the goal. We think by putting in fifty nine hundred west, that helps accomplish that.
So if a developer came in and wanted to put residential on there, they could put up a brick wall on Beasley and then have it, that neighborhood exit to the south through either that road that's on or adjacent to the school, or purchase the property of the a single home that is just west of the school and make a bigger road. So there is an outlet for it, correct?
But so there, so the, the two, the two points of access right now, you do have Stegner Way, which is. But so there, so the the two, the two points of access right now, you do have Stegner Way, which is here, the the dead ends. And then the property does actually have frontage here. Now, again, I know it's a little bit tricky to see, maybe it's better here. You see here, the 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 property is actually right on Beasley, where that kind of strip of property begins right here. So through here, there's there's a two strips of property, one owned by the city, one that's privately held that separates it, but but there is access here and then down here.
And do those industrial uses, are they just nine to five type of uses or nine to seven, or are they 24/7, any of them?
You know, at this point, I don't know that we know the answer. This would be where they would have tenants that would move into the buildings. And so I think that would, and the applicant may have more to add to this, but that's probably going to be driven by what kinds of tenants they are looking to attract, but I don't know they know the answer to that just yet.
Any other questions? Let's move on to the next one, which is ZT 10 2024. These next two are kind of interlinked, if you wanted to stew them together.
That'd be great, thank you. Okay, so we have, as you mentioned, there are two items that are really closely related. So the first is a change to our zone ordinance that will do away with what we call the, well, for the most part, the Decker Lake Station overlay zone. And I have here a map that shows kind of the a little bit of the history of of this, the at least the geographic scope of the overlay zone. So this originally adopted back in 96 and the intent was it would cover this area just south of 31st South and kind of around the Maverick Center. And as as we've since discussed, that unfortunately was never done correctly, but that was the intended area. It was expanded in 2002, so you can kind of see as you move to the right, changes. So it expanded in 2002, was was actually shrunk in 2006 for the E-Gate Apartments. And then again, in 2020 for the Dekker Station Apartments. And then move forward to today, again, as we discovered, it was that area south of 31 was not officially designated. And so today, there's actually only five properties that actually have the overlay zone on them. And in fact, one of these properties, the council recently voted just a month or so ago to remove the overlay zone from. So there's there's just the the five parcels remaining. So the next item on the agenda would rezone those five parcels so that they no longer have the overlay zone on them. So that's that's the Z8 2024 application. And in addition to that, of the of the five parcels, four of them would rezone from M to C2. And so as you look at those properties that are developed, two of them are hotels. And so those would be, those would work in the C2 zone. The other two are owned by Rocky Mountain Power and it's just for their, you know, transmission lines and their substation. The the fifth parcel, you can kind of see it's it's up in that corner here, if I can get my cursor to work. But it's it's owned by Granger Hunter. It's the piece that's kind of wrapped around by the apartment complex. And that piece is actually just by area too small to rezone to C2, so we're just keeping it the M zone. But again, it's it's developed as a sewer lift station and will likely be that way again indefinitely. So the to summarize, the the code change is removing the Decker Lake Station overlay zone from the code. And then the zone change is removing that zone or that overlay from specific properties so that basically there no longer be properties in the city that that have the overlay zone on them. Now, just one other detail on the on the code. There were specific provisions we felt like were were worth keeping in that, for example, you'll notice on Decker Lake Drive, we do have specific requirements for a certain size sidewalk and park strip. So those kinds of things, we like streetscape type things, we moved to a different portion of the of the code. But again, for the most part, the, for example, the the use restrictions are essentially going away.
Any questions on these two issues? I'll see you. Thank you. Well, now move to ordinances and 24 dash 49. We'll turn the time over to Jamie Young.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, Jamie Young, Parks and Recreation Director. So I have an ordinance change to the consolidated fee schedule out in front of you today to change the rate of the player pass for the golf courses. For a few years, it's been $249 and we would like to raise that to $300. To we're also, our our intent is to reduce the number of passes that we sell. And the difference in 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 the revenue would certainly be made up with full paying rounds. One of the complaints that we often get is, as you guys may have have heard before, is that our golf courses are tough to get on. And so at least it will be be with full paying, more full paying people than than the pass holders that we have. So this, the, I think the last time the golf, the pass itself was changed was about three or four years ago. And the payoff has been about 10 rounds of golf that would pay off that that rate. And so by by increasing the the rate, it gets it to about 13 to 14 rounds, which makes it a lot more. The people that are going to use it are still going to get the value, but the people who who don't won't necessarily buy one just to have one.
Any questions from the council? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Well, move to our resolutions and address 24 dash 155. And we'll turn the time over to Ms. Whitaker.
Hello, good evening. My name is Candace Whitaker, Assistant Parks Recreation Director and Family Fitness Center Director. So today I am here to talk about the issue of completing the winterization of our central chiller and cooling system at West Valley City Family Fitness Center. The West Valley City Family Fitness Center had a centralized chiller installed to be more energy efficient. When it was installed, it was determined that glycol could make the energy less efficient. So it was originally not included in the process. So to protect the cooling system from freezing, the cooling system has to be isolated. The indoor elements, the outdoor elements need to be isolated and filled with glycol. By separating the outdoor system, lesser amounts of glycol will need to be used, thus reducing reducing the cost of maintenance going forward. And the project as presented will include plumbing, pumps and glycol. So it's the recommendation of the city staff to approve this project as proposed to American Mechanical Systems. American Mechanical Systems is on state contract for HVAC. And it is the contractor for the preventative maintenance at West Valley City Family Fitness Center. And it was the contractor that initially did our energy efficient fee project and is trusted by West Valley City.
Any questions from the council?
Is this winterization going to be required every year?
No, this will be a one time project.
Will it be finished in time for this year's freeze?
If we award it, yes.
Will the pricing stay the same? Because I noticed on the fine print bottom, it says it's only good until September.
The pricing is the same. The amount that was presented is the not to exceed cost, and so that is the expected price.
Just want, didn't want him to come back and say, well, it was good until September, you didn't vote on it until November or so.
No, we're, we're good. We we got that settled. Anything, any other question?
I'll send you. Thank you so much.
Awesome, thank you.
All right, we'll now move to resolution 24 dash 156. And I asked, and I'm still going to screw it up. So Paula Belbar.
Good evening. We are here to present today about some policies, changes to our personnel manual. After a lot of discussions with the city manager, the employees and a benefit survey, we understood how important the cash-in program is to employees. And so we decided to look at that program and make it a little bit more efficient and more conservative so that it extends to more employees within the approved city budget. We also conducted a comparative analysis of benefits with our surrounding cities and looked at aligning our benefits package with regional standards. So with that, I will go through our red line behind me. So one of the things that we are adding is that to terminating good standing, so once an employee gives their two weeks' notice, we'll require them in part of that good standing that they also need to complete an exit interview. And that can be done through our system velocity, or if they prefer to do it in person, they can do it. They'll have to reach out to us and we'll schedule it. We also eliminated our PTO bucket. So employees used to accrue at a small rate of PTO per paycheck. And then at in November, they would get an 80 hour bucket. So we're eliminating that this year, we're paying our probationary employees a pro-rated amount on the bucket. And then starting the first payroll of our next fiscal year, so June 21st, we're spreading out that PTO through the year, that bucket of 80 hours through the year, so that our PTO accrual is higher. We remain competitive with other cities, but also more attractive to when we hire new employees, new talent. So the the new deadlines for PTO carryover will align with also the holidays that we are proposing, starting June 21st. Any PTO hours over 320 hours for civilians and 448, and I'm sorry, for civilians and police, 448 for the the fire department will be forfeited. Employees not terminated for costs receive compensation for accrued eligible compensation compensation time. Holidays and bank sick leave, in addition, PTO will be paid out at the percentage of the total PTO according to schedules 10-1 and 10-2 of the 320 hours, sorry, I'm supposed to be. I'm scrolling down. So this is just the bucket of PTO, the eight hours that's spread out instead of four hours to start with. The employees will start at PTO at seven and a half in one year for five years after that. And then that's the 50% accrual for part-time benefited employees and then the fire department. So with the cash-in program for employees, we will make that available from now on, from next fiscal year on, from the first Monday in November through the last Thursday of December. This program is a first come, first served basis while the funds are available within the city approved budget. So full-time or part-time benefited employees make cash PTO equivalent to one of the employees' pay periods. PTO will be paid out at the percentage of the total PTO hours according to schedules 10-1 and 10-2. Do you mind going down? So there's scheduled PTO schedule. So the first year, the employees are not allowed to cash in PTO. We want employees to accrue their PTO so that they can use it for medical appointments, federal emergencies, whatever they need. From one to four years, they'll go at 65, so when they do their cash-in, they will give you section. And then five to nine years, 75, 10 years, sometimes 80%. We hope this will encourage employees to use more of their PTO instead of cashing it in. It's supposed to be a benefit for mental health, not for cashing. But we also understand the extra money really helps. And so we're doing it during the holidays and hope that that will help employees too. Then we looked at what other cities were doing with these holidays. We found out that West Valley City only had 11 holidays when most of the other cities had 13 plus holidays. And so after a lot of talks to EFO, a little bit of arm wrestling, we were able to propose to include Indigenous Peoples' Day and Christmas Eve, which was very generous to to add to our holiday, our proposed holidays. Our employee survey mentioned, several times, employees mentioned that they used to have Christmas Eve before and they really missed it. And so they wanted it back. And so those are some of the proposals we're doing. You have any questions for me?
Question?
Yeah, go ahead.
Just curious, when on the the buyback and also on the PTO changes, is it? There's a coming up, another agenda item we have. A consulting coming to do a comp study could, I don't know if we could hold off on those changes and maybe until we gain some insight in the comp study, or maybe it won't cover that. But it does seem some of those changes are a little drastic. And I'm just curious if the comp study could help gain some insight on what industry trends are.
So we did a com, we did a benefits analysis. We had one of our HR analysts called every city to see what they were doing. And so this is according to what other cities are doing. And I I believe so that when compensation is, is also going to look at our benefits, yes. But I I believe these ones are within what other cities in the valley are doing. We looked at Lathan, Lehigh, Ogden, Orem, Provo, South Lake City, Sandy City, South Jordan, St. George, West Jordan, and Los Cruces, New Mexico. So some, these are some of the data that we collected to put this together for you. I believe the PTO is very competitive with other cities. I think it will attract talent to our city and make people more willing to leave a 10 year job with some other city to come work to, I think, to start that seven and a half. Because most of the time when you have 10 years with another city, you're already making 10 hours of PTO. So this will not be a big kick to be able to compromise and come to our city. I think West Valley City is a wonderful city to work with, with a lot of diversity and a lot of good employees. I'm happy here. And so, you know, I would like to advocate for people to come work for us. I believe we had a city that offered 15 holidays, so 13 is like middle, we're not going above. We're just staying with what other cities are doing. We were really below with 11 holidays. I think the vested time that we're proposing gives to the employees, but also gives to the city because we're not paying at 100% like we were paying. Any employee that leaves, it gets paid at the same percentage. So if an employee lives within the four first four years of employment with the city, they don't leave at 100% like they used to on their PTO. We capped it at 320 and they get paid at 65%. So there's a little bit of give and take here.
They can add. It's a little bit of, maybe a little bit of background to how we got this exchange going on between HR and administration here. So the drastic changes to the PTO buyout. So you know, currently you're able to buy a dollar for your hour at 100%. Philosophically, you know, you know, I'll take ownership for this philosophically is, I don't want employees to be incentivized to not take PTO and use that as a bonus at the end of the year. And so we've And so we've already had discussions even, even with our our city manager dialogues with entire staff. I let them know that we're looking at taking away the PTO cash-in altogether. Recognizing that people do use that as, as a, you know, maybe a some financial help at the end of the year. For me, like I said philosophically, I was always opposed to that because I felt like PTO should be PTO and shouldn't find ways to work around that so that you can cash it in. And I know there's circumstances though, specifically in public safety where, you know, and others, other areas where they need to work. You don't have the coverage and so it needs to be there. And so HR came up with a good, this is basically their solution to the compromise with the city manager's office. Instead of taking out the PTO, decreasing that, that amount, so that it does disincentivize, so it's not an equal across the board where that it is better, you'll get more value using your PTO as opposed to to turn it in and cashing it in. And then also the pot. The other reason for, for looking at PTO cash-in is we have a finite amount of money and we have a pot that's budgeted every year. And not everybody gets to cash in anyway, because it's first come, first served. And so this way, you know, the hope is that we can spread out that pot a little bit more. And then to your question, counselor, listen, the compensation study won't go off of philosophical, you know, they, they won't give us, address our philosophical opinions, they'll look at other cities like we have if we want them to. But essentially, the comp study is, is gonna go over basically compensation and job description. So they won't address that. If we told them to address it, they probably would, but they'd do the same thing that we, we did. And so it really is, like I said, it really is philosophical. Approach on, on our part, on my part and compromise with our HR department. And then the other part of it, you know, with the other, the holiday change is really, as we've gone back and forth. Christmas Eve is, is really, from what I understand, just as I suspected, even with my previous cities, it's sort of a ways to have the city hall open anyway, because apparently there's nobody, I mean, I can imagine nobody really doing business on Christmas Eve. So that was an easy, sort of an easy one. And then the other one is that Indigenous Peoples' Day. That's something that we discussed is cities throughout the state and even the country using that. If it's not that one, it's, it's something else to get it up to that, that standard amount. That's where those, those have come from. The PTO, there's really not much change, not real drastic of a change when you the accrual are, it's not much, it's not really drastic. It's, there's a lump sum. I still don't understand why we had a lump sum in November. I, I still, people have explained it to me several times, but I just can't get why we just get this random lump sum in November. And it doesn't accrue equally throughout the year. So that's all that changes and the rounding, rounding up. It really is significant round up, but it's essentially to, to land that accrual out. That's more of a, just a process, I mean, a policy, or not maybe a philosophical.
It's efficiency.
Just makes it a little bit more efficient and makes, at least makes more sense to, to do it that way than to to accrue at a certain amount and then a random eighty hours in November. But that's, that's maybe background in addition to what I know Paula has done a great job of going through. But maybe give you the background between, the exchange between administration and our, and our HR department. So that's how we've come up with this, where we're at here with this policy.
We don't like the additional time to educate employees and implement the policies. And the only thing we're requesting that gets approved or gets implemented upon your approval, if you approve, is the holiday so that employees could enjoy the Christmas Eve off this year. So that's the only thing we're asking to implement right away. But most of these changes will implement after June twenty-first. And so we would take this time between now and then to educate employees, to let them know, to spread the word about the PTO cash-ins so that not just the older employees know about it and apply right away for it, but the new employees have the chance if they need to, to have use of that benefit. But again, at the percentage, we're not doing PTO at a hundred percent for anyone. So that's the give back to the city.
Is there just one PTO bucket? Is there a second one for sick leave?
There's no sick leave, yeah.
I'm not against the changes. It just seems odd that we're asking, we're doing a comp study, which comps should include everything, benefits and time off. And we're making changes prior to the understanding what the comp study could come back with. Or do we need a comp study if we're doing work ahead of time in-house?
And if we're, we're gonna get a comp study in the next two months or three months, and these changes aren't really gonna go into effect till next June, why not wait till we have the comp study?
The comp study will focus on wages and a new pay scale and will do a light survey of benefits for us. So this is more of a deep dive into PTO and the cash-in program. And that's why we use those eleven cities to, as comparables to us. So we really looked into every single one of these cities and what they're doing for their employees with PTO. So it will not be a, you know, light look at what other cities are doing and what we should be doing. This is a deep dive into PTO. We hope to analyze and evaluate the programs, the cash-in program and PTO and see how it's working for us. And if we feel like it needs changes, we are more than happy to come before you and present those changes and tell you why it worked or didn't work.
There is a little bit of a timing, because we got the January coming up. We got the beginning of the calendar year where these things will be affected by that. Whereas the compensation analysis is gonna take a little longer. I, I've seen compensation analysis take up to six months. But our, our goal is to make sure that that compensation analysis is ready for the budget, budget season the new fiscal year budget. But again, typically like Paula was saying, we, we don't usually look at you know, PTO in the compensation analysis. We look at benefits though. We look at what type of benefits.
Dental health, you know, vision, pet insurance, shoppers discount programs. What other benefits the city offers that we don't offer? We don't necessarily go into policies like PTO. So that's why we did our own in-house survey, why we gathered the information, where we discussed it back and forth with John and EFO. And, and we discussed it with the exact staff too, before bringing it to you, so.
And then for Christmas Eve this year, it will be in effect, correct?
That's the only thing we're requesting is that the holidays will go into effect immediately, set upon your approval, of course, so that the employees could enjoy Christmas Eve this year.
You, sorry, just explain, we talk about PTO in section F, and then the next section is section six, and this is bank sick leave. We just talked about not having a separate bank, you know, sick leave bucket. Just wondering, now we're talking about sick leave.
Oh, yeah.
So, do you want to?
Sure. I mean, I could just, so apparently when we switched over from years ago, I don't know, maybe twelve years? Twelve years ago, the city got rid of sick leave and made one bucket for PTO. Sorry, what?
Twenty years.
Oh, twenty years ago. And so when that transition was made, there were still individuals that had a sick leave bucket. So there's probably one or two people in the entire organization. Well, I don't know. We probably shouldn't even point, point that out, but.
This whole section is good for you.
So that, that was grandfathered in, I guess.
Yeah, but was grandfather at the rate that they were making at the time and so, yeah, okay. So that's, that's it. No analysis.
Okay, any other question?
Thank you so much for your consideration.
Well, you have the next one as well.
Yes, I do.
So twenty-four dash one fifty-seven, do you wanna handle it or?
So Mayor and Council, it's my pleasure to introduce you our compensation manager, Cory Durfee, and she will present on a compensation study RFP. Thank you.
Yes, good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you. So this resolution is to authorize us to enter into an agreement with Pontefex Consulting Group to go ahead and conduct a citywide compensation study for us. And as you may recall, we recently updated our pay structure for all of our non-sworn public employees. We transitioned to a range-based system, and that's to support a market-driven compensation philosophy. So to ensure this new approach is both competitive and accurately aligned with our current market standards, it is crucial that we bring in this outside agency to go ahead and conduct a study for us. So with that, in September, we issued an RFP and we received a large response of fifteen proposals from various consulting firms. And all of those responses met specific criteria that we outlined in the scope of our project, like performing a classification analysis, a market study, and an internal equity assessment. Those were at the forefront of our project. As Paula mentioned, they will perform a light benefit study as well for us. Where all of these proposals varied greatly was in their cost and their proposed timeframe. And so after receiving all of these proposals, we went through and we evaluated each firm on their experience, their approach, the cost timeframe and their references. And then recognizing the need to balance both fiscal responsibility with our project outcomes, we gave top consideration to those proposals that cost seventy-five thousand or less. And that left us with four agencies, which all had impressive qualifications and would offer an objective and a data-driven, data-driven, excuse me, approach. And after our thorough review, we felt confident in recommending Pontefex Consulting Group to y'all this evening. And there are several factors that we believe make Pontefex the right choice for conducting this study for the city. And one of those is being their personalized approach. So they emphasize that they don't rely on a one-size-fits-all solution, but rather they'll take the time to understand our city's unique culture and its needs in order to make sure that the study truly reflects our goals. The firm also has extensive experience working with public sector organizations like ours and their team has a deep expertise in compensation and benefits. They give us the confidence from their proposal that they'll provide quality results for us. We also appreciate their commitment to holding onsite meetings and providing a series of Comp 101 sessions, which will provide city staff with information throughout the project and keep them involved. Their twelve-week timeframe will align with our budget calendar for fiscal year twenty-six and ideally help us to stay on track for our target implementation, which is July first of the next fiscal year. They are also dedicated to creating a sustainable compensation structure and without requiring the addition of new software. So that is a fixed cost that you see there. And with that, they offer an additional year of support at no additional cost. So with all of those benefits and the total cost not to exceed that sixty-three thousand, six hundred and seventy-five dollars, we do believe that this will make partnering with them both valuable and cost-effective. Do we have any questions?
When was the last time when a similar study had been conducted here?
To my knowledge, we have not brought in an outside agency to conduct a comprehensive compensation study in the past. Though historically, we've done market surveys within our human resources office. Within recent years, they've been reactionary in the sense that we'll do them with regards to an issue of recruiting or retention for a specific job, or if there's a new position created, we'll price that accordingly. Any other questions?
See you. Okay, thanks. Okay, we'll now move to resolution twenty-four dash one fifty-eight and turn the time over to Chief Jacobs.
Good evening, Pauline Jacobs, Chief of Police. I am before you this evening with a renewal agreement with Axon. It is a five-year agreement. It's just over three million dollars with an annual cost of just over six hundred thousand. I have representatives here from Axon to go over the products and services that this contract covers. So I will turn the time over to them. Let you guys introduce yourselves for the record.
Thank you, Chief, Mayor, City Manager, Council. My name is Brian Matino. I'm a key account leader with Axon.
I'm Tommy Richardson. I'm your TASER point of contact.
For the last four or five years, I've worked with the Police Department, working on the body camera and TASER program. And so over the last twelve to eighteen months, we've been speaking with the Police Department about the best way to proceed, what the agency's and the city's true needs are. So I'll introduce Axon. We'll run through a couple of items that we're gonna cover. And then ultimately, we'd love to take some questions. And so if you're not familiar with who Axon is, Axon, we hit our thirty-year mark last year. We're a mission-driven company. So what we do is our goal is to protect life, accelerate justice, and make communities all over the world a safer place. The vision for that, or just the how we accomplish that, is we're a technology company. And so we like to innovate, we like to solve problems through innovation and put new technology in the hands of the men and women at the Police Department around the world to make the place, the city, a safer place. So there's who Axon is. As far as, we'll go into the background around why we're here before you today, talking about the previous contract and what we're looking at going forward with. We'll talk about their comprehensive technology program that we've provided to the Police Department based on twelve to eighteen months' worth of conversation, some of the software capabilities that are new to the agency, the fiscal impact, and really some goals for the future. Little background around why we're here before you today. Five years ago, so in December of twenty nineteen, the agency inked a five-year agreement with Axon, which included body worn cameras and tasers. That, that, that contract is coming to an end here in the next month. And and so over the last twelve to eighteen months, we've always been having conversations and identifying what the agency's true needs are. The current program includes body cameras that are refreshed every thirty months throughout the duration of the agreement. Because just like a, just like your cell phone, body cameras take a good amount of wear and tear and they don't last five years. And so throughout the agreement, the agency receives, from a sustainability perspective, refreshes of the hardware every thirty months, as well as the recommended useful life for the tasers, which I'll let Tommy dive into in a second, is also coming to an end at the end of the agreement. So the, the recommendation, or what the chief has brought forward today, is moving forward with a new five-year proposal that includes many of the same things from the past, but is also incorporates some, some new items, which we'll, which we'll cover here, to include Respond Plus, Auto Transcription, and Draft One. So inside of the, inside of the program that we've proposed includes refreshes of the agency's body worn camera hardware. Axon tries to innovate and have a new model or new device available at the, the time that an agency receives its, or is eligible for, its next body worn camera upgrade. And so within this proposal, agencies due to receive a new body for camera, which we'll show you here in a moment, as well as the next generation TASER, TASER device, which Tommy will cover. Included in the program, so the two hardworking pieces for body worn cameras and tasers. In addition to that, there's a suite of additional software that's also included. And I'll kind of run through these. Most of these are designed for officer safety or officer just efficiency. So being able to do more with less. The first one is Auto Transcribe. We take the audio file from the incident itself and we can turn that audio into text inside of evidence.com, which can, which is the cloud management software. It allows the Police Department to search through the large repository of digital evidence that they have, review incidents faster and just work more efficiently. Respond Plus, each of the body cameras that Axon delivers to the Police Department also has a cell phone chip, or a cell's chip inside of the body camera itself. also has a cell phone chip or a sales chip inside of the body camera itself, but allows for some unique capabilities for officer safety and just insights around where people are deployed across the city. First one is the GPS capability on the body camera. So if there's ever an officer safety concern or needing to know the status where someone is at, they would be able to find a GPS plot and as well as live stream based on certain roles and permissions to see what's going on in that incident. Redactions, obviously, this is a big thing across the world and this is a tedious task. Members of the community are often entitled to see or retrieve evidence from the police department. And in those scenarios, when you have to redact personal information or confidential information, it's it's not an easy task to go in there and redact those items manually. So Axon has some AI tools where we have gone in and trained algorithms to automatically detect things that need to be redacted the most. Faces, license plates, MDT screens, significantly speeding up the amount of time or decreasing the amount of time that it takes to perform a redaction. So you can solve some of these problems with more advanced tools rather than to have to throw more personnel at a problem. Community request, this is a capability that allows the police department to collect and digital evidence from the community and engage with the community without having to drive across town. You do manual evidence collection. With this tool, officers from their their phone or from their MVC could simply text or email a community member a link that community member can open up that link and ingest it directly to evidence dot com. You get the benefit of audit trails, everything that. The evidence management system, the agency has had over a hundred and fifty body cameras deployed for many, many years. So there's quite a bit of digital evidence that has been accumulated. The agency is entitled to unlimited storage within evidence dot com, so that continues with this new agreement. You'll never receive a bill for going over your storage thresholds. It's truly unlimited. As well as there's tools that we've built into evidence dot com that allowed the police department, their staff to package up pieces of evidence related to a case and share it with their partners downstream in the justice system. So the DA prosecutors, for example. Last one here is draft one. One of the things that is plaguing law enforcement around the world is the amount of time that they are not out in the community engaging and doing the tasks that everyone in this room wants them to be doing, but they're behind a keyboard typing away, creating narratives. There's incredible amount of paperwork typing that these officers have to do, and oftentimes they're doing it in their car. Maybe that's the easiest or safest location. So with draft one, we use the facts captured within the body camera audio itself to help draft, I want keyword draft, the narrative for the officer to help aid in their report writing process. Just not do the report for them. It just helps speed certain aspects, cover it along. This is the body for camera the agency will be receiving. It is Axon's fourth generation body camera. Couple of the key components of this is obviously weather like we've had this week. It needs to be waterproof, extremely durable and have a full shift battery. Last thing we want is officers going out on shift, the maybe their battery doesn't last them. And so these cameras have a less than one percent RMA or return rate across the world. End to end security, so fully encrypted. One of the new capabilities on this new camera is it does have a rapid recharge capability with a magnetic quick disconnect charging port at the bottom. So if officers are held over, they're working longer than normal shift, they would have the ability to charge inside of their cars and make sure that they have everything that they need. Let's skip here. Axon Respond, this is something that I mentioned earlier, and this is what it actually looks like in practice. And so if there's ever a critical incident or an officer safety issue, assuming they're correct roles and permissions, police department would be able to see GPS plots of all the body cameras where they are throughout the city. And if needed, be able to tap on to each one if they are actively recording and be able to observe a live stream. This capability here, also you'll see GPS little icons for body cameras themselves. You'll see icons for in car video as well, as well as drones. Here are a couple of slides showing Axon Citizen feature that I talked about earlier. So on the left two slides is the officer's workflow. And on the right two slides would be the citizen's workflow. The officer goes on their phone, inputs a couple categories, IDs, metadata associated to proper retention and what the piece of evidence is that they're collecting. They email or text this link to the community member that's right before them. Community member simply on their phone, it's upload, grabs it out of their camera roll, the ring doorbell footage, whatever evidence that they may have and very seamlessly submit it to the police department. We we noticed that agencies that use this tool increase of a higher success rate in collecting digital evidence because it's so easy right there when they're on scene. And everything that the agency collects with this tool is included in the unlimited storage plan.
So part of this contract is going from the TASER that you have right now, which is called TASER seven to TASER ten. We announced TASER ten in January of twenty twenty three. Since then, it's the majority of what agencies purchase across the country, including Salt Lake City, West Jordan, Provo, St. George have all purchased this device. Before I get into the specifics, we set a goal a couple of years ago. We call this our moonshot goal, but it's to cut gun related deaths between police and the public by half by twenty thirty three. To do this, we need to provide you a less lethal tool that can be used simply in more situations than the TASER has been able to be used in the past. Unfortunately, up until TASER ten, really the range of a TASER is about, you have to be about four feet away from the individual to eighteen or nineteen feet. But past that, you really can't use a TASER effectively in most situations until we built TASER ten. And TASER ten really opens the range of your opportunities to use the TASER device. So it's actually a forty five foot max range, so it's about double the distance where you can use this. There's simply a lot of standoff scenarios where you just can't use a TASER until this one, where you might be using a beanbag round or offend or something like that, which have a much higher risk of injury, workman's compensation claims, litigation, those sorts of things. Now you can use a TASER to cause neuromuscular incapacitation at a distance of forty five feet, which you've never been, never been able to do in the past. It also has a ten probe magazine. Prior to TASER ten, we were limited to two shot devices. This is now a ten shot device where you can continue to fire the device until you see the change of behavior in the in the subject. That's going to be important if you caught up and lose your thing clothing or you miss, you know, situations are pretty dynamic and you can miss the target quite a bit. Much more like a firearm now, you can continue to fire this until you get your good connection. And then if it flies at two hundred and five feet per second, really what that means is it's extremely accurate. So if you're really aiming for somebody's calf, because that's where the skin is, you can hit the calf. So it flies very quickly. It's very accurate, but does not provide a bigger wound profile that we've done in the past.
The slide really just, the aim of this is to highlight the fiscal impact to the city. So where we're at before to where you're going at now. So this contract that is before you includes hardware, software, licensing, professional onsite training, as well as full contract length, no questions asked warranties on all the hardware that's provided. So this is truly a all inclusive, total cost of ownership type of program that we've provided here to the agency. The total cost is the number that you see here on the screen, and it's divided into five equal payments of six hundred thousand per year. I believe it's delivered in a hundred and sixty five body cameras, a hundred and sixty five of these new TASER tens as well, with all of the annual consumables, warranties, storage, really everything that the agency needs for successful body worn camera and TASER program, and really just a continued one. Truly, the goal of Axon, the partnership that we have with West Valley is these objectives that you'll see here on the screen. So really, the first slide that we showed up was Axon's vision for the future and way that we would achieve that is through technology. And so with this, a lot of the people kind of demand these days within interactions with the police to be able to know and trust that there's a body camera on the chest of the officer. So with that, this technology builds community trust, allows people to engage with the community and adjust to the digital evidence and just make sure that people know that they have confidence in all the technology that the police department's using. It increases accountability and transparency, which is really what is really to be expected these days. And then it just continues the operational excellence. And so these tools just increase efficiencies efficiencies within the police department itself. Helped the agency continue doing its good work. Ultimately, the goal is for Axon to provide tools that keep officers safe, keep the community safe. Just kind of bridge the gap around maybe community trust that hasn't always been, you know, where it's been over the years, not just not speaking to West Valley, but just in general. We believe that technology is one of the things that we can implement. Implement that will actually drive change very quickly. So that's our goal. And we we zip through that, but we did leave some time to answer any questions that anyone may have.
Questions from the council?
On the report creation, do you have any data or stats on the time saved? What's going, what's happening today versus the assistance of the?
Yeah, I'll share one stat that we have that was published out of Fort Collins. They were one of our beta partners. They published this chief Shaboda on LinkedIn. Look them up and you'll see some spots around this tool. I'll turn it over to the chief or maybe how it's been working here since through some of the testing. Fort Collins, for example, they can see similar to be a little bit larger in size. They've been using this since spring. They've noticed a sixty five percent time reduction in the amount of time that it takes to create. The officers are spent typing away and creating their narratives. I want to be clear, we're not automating report writing by any means. We're just using the facts that are captured with the audio to create a first draft that the officer then has to go in. And we force manual intervention where they make that report their own. They sign it at the bottom, kind of like a DocuSign, that they're willing to attest to that. Everything captured in that report is accurate and true. So we're seeing time savings. We've spent a lot of time implementing safeguards to make sure that we are causing any additional problems downstream in the justice system as we're trying to give tools to officers which they desperately need. And then we're also seeing improvements to report quality as well.
Yeah, we've been testing it for a few months now, and I have officers reporting that it saves them anywhere from thirty to forty five minutes per report.
Agency of this size, if you can have that type of time savings, ultimately, it'll kind of does a food wave in creating effectiveness, police department, like getting people back out on streets, back at service faster versus coming back to the station and continuing their their report writing. Thank you for the question.
Another question on the TASER, you mentioned thirty months on the camera replacement. Is there a schedule on the TASER or is that just kind of?
TASER has a five year expected useful life and TASER technology improves much slower than camera technology. We announced that device in January of twenty twenty three. We don't have another device on the horizon. And so this is a five year contract. Hopefully, by the time this contract is ending, we'll be ready to debut a new device, but we don't have a refresh of TASER devices in the contract.
Tasers have a recommended useful life of five years. The body cameras is thirty months. A lot of that is driven by the number of charging cycles and batteries associated with that. They just, those batteries start to show their wear and tear after, you know, two or three years, which is why we replace them with new cameras, but also the next generation. So if there's a body five camera that comes out around the middle of this next contract, the agency will be eligible for that.
We started our body worn camera program in twenty fourteen, so it proved this would be the third five year contract with Axon.
Oh, we have to do that.
Yes, we've been very pleased with the products that they provide and the abilities we have. The that's got an interactive ability. With the digital storage and it makes the the process very seamless.
In my day job, we worked a lot with AI assistant reporting in the hospitals in terms of medical reporting and that. One new issue, because this is new, is legal challenges or malpractice suits where it's not created fully by a doctor, but it's AI assisted. And there's some for here there. Has any of that come up in the law enforcement area? Yeah.
Yeah, we have discussions with the district attorney and she actually just had us do an auditor here last week. We know where the the specifics of the product and their relationships with the parameters that are in place and it's it's needs is compliant, so it doesn't go into outside sources or else something in what's in the body one camera footage itself.
AI is obviously a very popular topic. And so there are a bunch of different ways to implement and actually build these tools. I can't speak to the one that you're using, but with Axon, using these large language models, there's a bunch of different ways that you can change the way that they behave. And Axon has done something in the way that we've created our tools. Turn it down the warmth of the ability that they may imagine certain details. If you've ever played around with chat GPT, sometimes they have the opportunity to do that. There's in the backend of these tools from OpenAI, there are settings for this. We have turned those all of the way down. So what we do is we stick to the facts that are captured within the audio. And if there's something being discussed or inferred that we need to capture within the narrative, but we don't have that fact explicitly stated within the audio, then we have told the AI not to make any assumptions, not to make a guess, to stop. And then what we do is we implement brackets or a prompt for the officer to go in and input or clarify and make the report their own. So in any scenario, and if you do not know exactly what happened, do not proceed, and we just prompt the officer to manually create that part of the report.
That satisfied my question in terms of risk management has already vetted this and gone through this.
I'll see any more questions. Thank you so much for your presentation. Okay, we'll now move to resolution twenty four dash one fifty nine and turn the time over to Mr. Ursula.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Before you, there is a resolution today to enter into an inter local agreement with Salt Lake County, specifically TRCC. This project process started many, many years ago. As you recall, we approached the county as we started creating the Veterans Memorial Phase One. And finally, after three or four years, we decided to continue the project without without the grant from the TRCC. And recently, our Jonathan Stringmeyer convinced or strong armed the TRCC that we deserve their portion of the grant to continue the process with our veterans memorial. So this document comes with a couple of phases. So I'd like to explain and refresh your memories of some of the things that we wanted to do at the veterans memorial. The the actual plan and the design and desire for us to have this memorial is to honor our veterans first and to educate the public about veterans, our military, our government, the way we operate, and to create some contemplation, an expandable program and a gathering place for our residents or the entire country, as a matter of fact, to come and honor our veterans. So some of the process and the desires that we had to add into this phases from one to four or five or whatever we're going to be ending up with is to have statuaries that present or represent our veterans. So we started with what you see in front of you, the actual memorial for all veterans that perished during the war. That's what that memorial stands for in in phase one. So in order for us to collect the portion that TRCC approved for this process, as you recall, it was seventy five, twenty five match. Seventy five city, twenty five, the county with the RCC. So we, Jonathan, We Jonathan, by explaining that instead of doing. The veterans memorial as one big huge package, we wanted to break it down into several phases. And we were asking them for phase one. Grant dollars, which I'll discuss in a minute. Then we go, we were going to use that phase one dollars to expand to phase two. And we were asking also in this document to give us the twenty-five percent portion for the phase two plan. This document shows that they're giving us dollar amount for phase one, the twenty-five percent. TRCC funding and phase two. So what is phase two and what we're looking for? So please keep in mind that all of this is conceptual. And I wanted to show you a little bit of what we're thinking with. The Spectrum Memorial and the expansion of it to give you an idea where we're headed. So if you recall. Phase one, we had all of the parking lot, the memorial for all. Veterans who perished during from World War One all the way to today. And it had. Two different plazas and berms on both sides with trees. What we're proposing is to add to the existing. By continuing the actual desire and design of the actual veterans memorial. So this is existing. And this is what we're proposing for the future. And this could be in several phases because the dollar amount is climbing up rapidly. So if I were to show you what. Conceptually, what we were thinking of, how to add the World War Two memorial. The desire from the council or. Past mayor Ron Bigelow was to. Represent a World War Two memorial in our veterans memorial. So we sat down again, this is conceptual. We thought of some things that we could build and expand upon. So if we were to have our backs towards the actual existing memorial right now. And we're looking south, this is what we were looking at. Somewhere where we could. Expand and continue the motif, so to speak, of what we have. And provide spaces to add more memorials, statuaries honoring our veterans. So this little contraption, again, this is Hago Parslanian dreaming. There's a huge wall in the back. That we were asked that we need to have for educational purposes. And that wall will house stories, various plaques for military personnel. An actual obelisk, a little water feature in the middle. And these trees are intertwined, representing all six military. Arms of the forces, Army, Navy, Air Force, Marines, Coast Guard and Space Force. So when I'm putting that memorial in back of me and looking to the north, you would see. The Utah monument that is existing right now in the middle. So when it's all said and done, this is on one point six acres. The first phase was on three point two acres. So this property that we purchased from the Jones family to the south of. The the memorial represents that one point six acres. So. Please bear with me. I thought it would be nice for you to have this view of the grandeur of what it looks like. Yes, there's a lot of Ferraris, Lamborghinis in here. We believe West Valley City is a class A city, so. We have those cars. So to your. To your left is the existing memorial. And by the way, we have been visited by many, many people that come. And scratch piece of paper on the names of their loved loved ones as they do at the Vietnam's memorial. So as you could see, there was a statuary already in place in this design. And that was an idea that was promoted recently by adding. A statuary that. Is the Navajo Indian Code Talkers. So. When I took over. This phase and I was introduced to the Navajo Code Talkers. Harry James, a friend of our city who passed away not long ago. Instigated and started this idea that we should. Put a memorial in our veterans memorial, something that depicts World War Two. And I'm sure some of you have seen the pictures of the actual clay. Depiction of. What we were asking about the World War Two Code Talkers. And. When we looked at where to install. This statue and how much does all of this cost? It was scary to me, so I had to reduce it in size. So I'll show you in a minute that what we're proposing is not one-time expansion. As we have more dollars, as we have more individuals donating and. We have some fundraising that are successful, we could expand. So. What I'm proposing is to create something that's expandable instead of having it. On one point six acres to do it only about a hundred and eighty feet long and the same width of the existing. So. I started thinking of how I could reduce cost. So what this origin picture shows that there is, if you recall, there's a lot of these stone benches. In on the existing memorial and those spend the stone benches were supposed to be. Advertised to sell and to have veterans' names on other what have you. And I have all those throughout this entire phase two, so to speak. So I thought we need to reduce that. We need to reduce the size of this wall in the back to make it more cost efficient. But still keep it as future. So. If you look at this picture, we reduced the size of the wall into ten panels. We reduced some of the stone from throughout, but we could expand in the future. And we also. Provided a location for the Code Talkers. So when you look at this prices or the numbers, again, this is conceptual. And these are numbers that I've gathered from our architect and our contractors. So the total picture, the the. What I call Hago's dream is about three and a half million dollars. So I reduced it down to two million dollars, but still our budget was one point six million dollars. So we decided that the facilities. Construction management will take over the project. And reduce all the general conditions and the overhead profit and have some contingency. And bring it down to a number that is. Meeting our actual budget. Where did we come up with that budget? Again, this is. Where did we come up with this budget is that our original. Tag for phase one was two point one six three million dollars. And Jonathan was able to convince the county that we need to have that money because that was promised to us by them. And that's the five hundred and twenty-four thousand seven hundred and fifteen dollars. We also told them that we have an idea to do a phase two for World War Two memorial. We would like to use those dollars because they're our dollars as our match for phase two. And one point five nine six, one point six million dollars was our projected. Cost for phase two and we're asking twenty-five percent for that. So the county. In this proposal that you have is willing to pay us nine hundred and twenty-three thousand eight hundred and forty dollars. So if we take that from the one point five nine six million dollar price tag. That would leave approximately six hundred and seventy-two thousand six hundred sixty dollars obligation as a match for the city. So. Short of it is, I'm here to see what your pleasure is again. Once we decide or. You decide of which way for us to proceed. We have an option for us to sit down. And really put a design together that I could bring to you and say, this is exactly how much it's going to cost. So. I also was able, originally, there was a talk that. Mister Stan Watts wanted three hundred thousand dollars for this statue. I was given the permission by the city manager to go and talk to him. So Thursday and Friday, I was able to go and talk to him. And our conversation ended up that he really likes to have. This statue in West Valley City in Utah. And he also had a plan of selling this one, but he hasn't sold it yet. But he was thinking if he was able to do two of them, making the West Valley one, the first one erected. And the second one that he was going to sell to the Smithsonian. So by saying that, I told them I don't have three hundred thousand. You have to sharpen your pencil quite a bit. It came down to two twenty-five, but finally we agreed to two hundred. So he is willing to sell us this statuary for two hundred thousand dollars. Questions, comments, concerns? Where would you like me to go?
Any questions?
Would it be possible just to do phase one and get our money from the county and put this? On an agenda later, phase two later?
We need to reapply. Jonathan, look at me, please. We need to reapply and have it changed. From the total amount to the first amount, correct? Yeah, and and the reason that also we're bringing to you right now. Is that they keep asking us, are you going to sign this thing? Because the deadline to expend this money is June thirtieth. Next year.
We've already expended the money for phase one.
Yes, yes, we want this money. It's our money. They promised us. I went and presented almost four and a half years to the TRCC saying that. We met our obligation. I need you to meet your obligation, but it took Jonathan to break some arms.
And just in the interest of time, since we need to kind of move on to the the main thing is we. It's a six hundred thousand dollar match is what we're. We're needing to commit from the city in order to retrieve the rest of the money. We can figure out how we plan this if we do a phase one approach or not, but. And then we can we can have other times on the agenda to talk about the design and what we move forward, but.
So we don't get anything unless we commit our six hundred thousand.
We just know that in order to get the maximum amount from the from the county, that nine hundred. Some. There's that match. And that's a combination of phase one and two. So. If we're okay with with that. I say, you know, not leave the nine hundred thousand on the table and commit to the six hundred. We can, we can take some time and we don't have a whole lot of time because we got to expand it in June, but we at least have. Other opportunity to maybe to to go over design and what we want, what you all want us to move forward with, but. I think just for the interest of time right now, too, we probably don't have much time to get into the design.
Yeah, and all of this design. Ideas are future. Yeah, the 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 actual agreement needs to be done very quick.
I have a question for you. But we have anyone or maybe people they can watch this place. Or maybe from time to time, because we have the shelter right there in the south of Lake, for for us and in the summer time, some other. People, they walk around and this will be a good location for them to wander around. And sometimes you can see in absent, you know what I'm saying, in absent. That's a police, a police officer, a couple of them in. You know, culture separation center in that area. So I could wonder about that, that we have people to monitor them closely. We've got to avoid that because we don't want to see this place in Salt Lake City. A lot of places you see them. A lot of people on the.
Very, very good question, Councilman. Our police department often. Our officers, when they're at the cultural center or down that drive. They stop at the cultural center to do their paperwork. But there is police presence and there is parks department presence because they clean it. They trim it, they mold the lawns and what have you. So it's never left alone. But we could be more diligent. And watching it. Knock on wood, we haven't had an incident yet.
Okay, thank you so much. All right, if there's no objection from the council, I'm going to move Eric Mattson up real quick and then Dan can have the rest of the show. Yep, you take it first and then we'll have Dan finish up.
All right, we're coming to you tonight and trying to get your permission to buy an alignment rack. The shop does between a hundred and a hundred and fifty alignments a year. And it's it's really not a big cost. We pay seventy-five bucks to have one done. It's the time that it takes for us to take two people to shuttle it to the location and then two people to go pick it up. You know, you're an hour and a half, two hours by the time you put a pencil to it. So we're asking for permission to purchase one. I believe you okayed it in the program mods last year. So we'll pay for it out of the CIP funds. I think if you add the manpower hours and then the cost to it. It'll probably pay for itself within two or three years. And we'll be able to, you know, lessen the downtime for PD and and fire departments. We'll be able to do everything from. Camrys to the F five fifties. So.
And how long do these machines last?
Nah, they're probably got about a ten to fifteen year life. They always are going to have updates that we'll we'll pay for. But we should be able to do that out of our own budget.
Does the council have any questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Johnson, you have twenty-four, sixty, sixty-one and sixty-three.
All right, this first resolution is a sidewalk repair project. As you recall, recall. We came to you and told you that we were going to be bidding a project that would fix some of the worst sidewalk displacements that have been caused by trees throughout the city. This is a contract to replace approximately fifty sidewalk locations throughout the city. We got decent bids. The bid is pronghorn construction and the amount of a hundred and seventy-two thousand. And we're asking the city council for authorization. It's been up to two hundred and twenty thousand in potential change orders so that we have a little bit of flexibility. To fix a little bit more around the surrounding areas as we find additional needs that just makes sense. So are there questions about this sidewalk repair project?
So have we already removed the trees that are causing the damage or we're removing the tree and fixing the sidewalk?
Contract removes the trees that caused the damage and repairs the sidewalk.
Okay. That was my only question.
Yeah.
There was a nice map that shows all the red dots.
Yep.
Are we determining a prioritization of these fifty areas?
These fifty areas were those. So we have an inventory of all of our sidewalk displacements and we have them categorized by. The size of the displacement and these are the fifty worst. They, these were our red dots on the map. And so we, this is kind of a worst first approach. And normally we've got our concrete crew that that will go out into a subdivision and fix everything while they're there. But this approach is really just trying to fix the worst stuff that's the that's really. You know, the the stuff that people look at that and say, why hasn't somebody done something about that? So we've got a lot of those, though. This doesn't get all of those, but it gets the red dots. And some of our orange dots will grow. And some of our orange dots will grow to be red dots, and we'll do this again. All right, this next resolution is the, we're requesting authorization to purchase streetlights. This is in advance of our upcoming, we have a streetlight infill project for this current fiscal year that we're in, that replaces, I don't even know, 45 lights on Lake Park Boulevard and 54 neighborhood streetlights at 18 locations throughout the city. So this is simply the, the advanced purchase of the lights. We, we get a great discount buying the lights directly from the suppliers and supplying them to the contractor. And, and so we, yeah, we're just request, requesting authorization to purchase these lights because they've got a long lead time. Construction contract is out to bid, and you'll be seeing that here in the next month or two. Yeah, this will be a pretty big, sizable one. In fact, we anticipate doing a budget opening for the construction project. We have a fund balance in the streetlight fund that, that we can spend, and, and this is a place to, to get some of that money out and on the street and lighten the streets. So. Any questions? All right, and this last one, oh, that's the alignment machine. This last one is a request to purchase a Mastic road patching machine. So we use a Mastic, it's a heated Mastic asphalt rubbery product. We use it to fill potholes. And for the past maybe five or six years, we've been using this product instead of just the cold mix that you can, you go put cold mix in a pothole on a wintry day, and, and you come back two weeks later and you do it again in the same pothole. And so this Mastic product sticks, stays in place, and we've been renting the machine for five or six years. And we think it makes sense to purchase a machine, just in rental costs alone, for the three or four months that we, that we rent it, we'll, you know, we'll pay for the machine in five, five or so years. And, but this, but if we purchase it, we'll have the flexibility to have the machine year round, where right now we just rent in the cold winter months. And so it would be our recommendation that you allow us to purchase this machine for a cost of 127,000 dollars.
Any questions on this issue?
When you rent the machine, assuming you have to provide your own?
The material, yes.
So there's no difference there?
No, the material, yep, is definitely on top of the purchase price.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we have our three consent agenda items, which are the usual easements, deeds, and right of ways. Does anyone have any questions on those three items? The Dan Johnson show is over. Are there, is there a desire to put the nine resolutions on the consent agenda, or would you like to make them separate?
A lot of money.
And it is. Okay, we'll go separate. All right, due to our lack of time, we will move our three, I mean, our two communication items off until the 26th. And I'll just ask if there's any questions with the council calendar. Any potential future agenda items? Yes.
Can you review the plan to replace our outgoing council member?
Yes.
That advertised quickly, so.
Yep, so I have a outline in place that I'll be sending soon for your consideration and input on any changes. Has a timeline of when we'll be posting, when we'll be accepting applications, when the interviews will occur, so.
So do we have a timeline when we can start posting and doing?
We can start, and, and I had proposed it in December, so we'll start noticing in December, accepting applications in January, and then you'll have your, you know, binders that, like, similar to what I provided last time. And then we'll have potentially early February would be when we would appoint.
Okay.
And that just falls, due to the, the date is, is January 7th when Mr. Pichusmane would take office, and so it would immediately begin then. We can start noticing before then, but we can't really process it until he's officially in office. So it's kind of a tight timeline, but we'll be ready.
He's still in office here.
Exactly, until he, yep, so I'll have a, I'll send that outline out to you either end of this week or early next week. You guys can review it and tell me any concerns that you have with the timeline or the process itself, and we can make any adjustments that you guys would like.
Do you see a need for adding another meeting to make sure and be able to go through the entire process?
We do, so I proposed a special meeting to actually hold the interview process, just so that's the only item of business. It would be a special meeting the first week of February. So it would be that first Tuesday of February is when I would propose that we do that. But we can fluctuate those dates however the council prefers, but I'll send that out. I can probably do that tomorrow or Thursday, so you guys can let me know any changes that you want.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or future agenda items? Hey, council reports?
I have a quick one. I attended the Wasatch Front Regional Council. It was, it was just an interactive meeting workshop where we looked at maps and gave feedback. This is a partnership with UDOT and UTA, and, and there's a lot of things that, that they're, you know, thinking in long-term goals. If anyone would like to, to give feedback, I have a handout here with QR codes where you want to look at their interactive maps and provide feedback, you can do that through these. I'll leave this in my box in the, in the council room or.
Well, we can probably have Angel send out an email with all of that on it for everybody. Yeah, scan it and put it in. Okay, great, thank you. Yeah, because if it's not on the plan, it doesn't get funded. Is there MO, so? Okay, anyone else? Yes?
I attended the Utah Association of Mosquito Abatement, Mosquito Abatement Association, the KMSR. And they had training, of course, for all of board members down there, similar to our training for the council on open meeting and that. Picked up a best practices booklet that has just come out from the Office of Legislative Auditor General. And so I'll just pass that on to either Nicole or Eric, whoever might be best use of that. Give some best practice basically on open meetings, other things. Open there.
Okay, anyone else?
I attended the community meeting that was hosted by University of Utah over at Hunter High in regards to construction plans for the new hospital. It was well-attended, a lot of good discussion and questions, and it sounds like we've got some things coming up on our agenda here to review in terms of recent development out there.
Great.
It's a good meeting.
Okay, I attended APA's Veterans Program yesterday. They do a spectacular job. If anybody has time in the future to be able to fit one of those in. And then last night, staff did a really good job on our veterans' dinner. And so I appreciate all those who came to that, and it was very well done. So seeing no others, we just have one more motion. Oh, and then we say hi?
Hi.
We stand adjourned.